Right on the cutting edge.
And I have no doubt.
It's a pain to have compost hauled out.
I'm getting...
Don't people usually go to pick it up?
No, they...
They got so much of it. We're on, we're live. All right. We're starting our January 8th Planning Board meeting televised. We got Mr. Paul Havity gonna give us a little insider information.
Insider information?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So I was asked to take a look at the way that the determination of applicability process works with regards to the Center Village Overlay District, Village Center Overlay District. Just so that I could really give you some feedback as to what you should be looking for when an applicant files that preliminary plan with you and what level of detail you should be getting engaged in, and what level of detail you really should try to avoid getting engaged in. So if you're looking at Section 195-130A states that the application and development review requirements of Article 21 Community Enhancement Investment Overlay District, CEIOD, Sections 195 and 119 shall apply to the VCOD. And then if you review that section, that section states that upon submission by an applicant, the planning board must make a determination whether the proposed type, size, and location meet the criteria for, in this instance it says CEIOD project, under Section 195-110. And really what you need to do when reviewing the bylaw is add in VCOD rather than CEIOD to that provision because it's specifically cross-referenced in the VCOD bylaw to tell you to look to the CEIOD standards. So that's basically what you really should be doing, is you should be making a threshold determination as to whether or not a proposed project meets the threshold requirements for filing an application. Until you make that determination, they don't actually have the right to file an application with the board under the bylaw. So then the question becomes really, how deeply should you be digging into the question? And there is a provision in the bylaw in Section 195-119B3 that talks about the role of the planning board in determining, in making that determination. It states that the board shall evaluate the project for its appropriateness, for the proposed location, to demonstrate its effects and impacts on the surrounding area and development, streets and other municipal facilities, public utilities and transportation, drainage systems, soil and other natural resources, and to show compliance with this article. However, you need to keep in mind that that determination is being based upon preliminary plans. Right? These plans aren't gonna have, you know, really detailed information with regards to issues like drainage and infrastructure and things of that nature. So you won't be able to make a definitive determination with regards to any of those issues. So you really shouldn't be spending too much time, you know, going down the road of doing that. What you really, you need to look at it as a threshold determination. Is there something that on its face jumps out at you and says, this is something that there's no way it can be brought into compliance? For instance, if you had a circumstance where if we ultimately wound up in some sort of a sewer moratorium, where no one's allowed to connect to the public sewer for this type of a project, and they don't have any other way of handling wastewater on a particular property, you might say, you know, until the sewer moratorium is lifted, there's no point in going forward with this project, so we're not gonna, you know, grant you your determination. But if it's at all questionable, you should err on the side of caution. You know, you can note it in your determination that we have concerns regarding a particular issue, but this is something that needs to be more fully developed as part of an application process.
Can I ask you just one question, just to... I mean, I know there were lots of discussion between the project that was behind that other nine Acton Road, and they were worried about the size and everything else. I didn't hear any discussion about when that was going in, you know, affordable housing was a real, real issue. Somebody could really go and they could, they could go a different route and do affordable, so we would be in a lot more lenient on numbers. I mean, that's a lot of, that goes through my head, and I'm sure it was going through a lot of other people's heads. At one time, we had a threshold that was being desired by the state.
So you're talking about the Chapter 40B, 10% affordable housing threshold?
Yeah. And, you know, we got a little bit, you know, they were also, not just the 10% affordable, you're also talking a, there's a density bonus that goes with that, and you're going by state regs for numbers per, you know, units per building. There's a bunch of the stuff that goes with that. You know, they are much more dense development than we try to put in a lot of areas. Now, that is gone for a while here, and depending on how we craft what comes down the road, we don't have to do as many large developments. Definitely listened to the town meeting people at the last meeting. They are definitely pretty anti-development right now. Everybody seems to have their fill of it. So that's what I'm saying is, I just don't see that. The number issue is probably what bothered everybody here more than anything else.
Well, so let's talk about the number issue first in terms of how it relates to the bylaw. I think that an issue that came up at that last meeting that was, I think, well raised is the question of whether or not they can actually do the number of units that they're proposing. And the number of units per building limitation isn't a state requirement. It's a requirement of this particular zoning bylaw. So the question becomes, you know, what sort of evidence does the board, you know, going to require for an applicant to submit to you to prove that they can do the number of units that they're proposing? And I think that it is something that this board should be considering requiring of any applicant is that they submit a proof plan to show that the number of units that they're proposing is actually consistent with all of the requirements of the bylaw. So in this instance, it would mean that they need to show they can get the number of detached dwelling units, or four unit dwellings on the site, and still comply with all of the other setback requirements, exclusionary requirements in terms of, you know, that front exclusion zone. All of that is information that is, you know, certainly necessary for this board to make a determination as to whether or not a particular proposal is consistent with the requirements of the bylaw. So that should be part of your threshold determination. It's a separate question regarding, you know, the temperature of the town and whether or not, you know, they've had their fill of large-scale development. As of right now, this is a zoning bylaw that is on the books. It's applicable. Anybody has the right to file an application pursuant to it, and this board needs to treat any application that comes before it, you know, in the same manner that it would any other. The board cannot act in a manner that's arbitrary and capricious because if you do, that renders your decision subject to a legal challenge on an appeal. Which gets back to what I was talking about with this in terms of your threshold determination. It's an interesting way the bylaw is set up in that there is no specific appeal route set forth in the bylaw with regard to your determination. If you make a determination that somebody doesn't have, doesn't meet the requirements of the bylaw and can't file an application, we don't provide a remedy for an appeal. We do provide a remedy that allows them to ask the planning board to reconsider its decision. But if the planning board declines to do that, it's an open question as to whether or not they can take advantage of a different remedy. So the state has a statute that's, it's called sursurari. And it's General Law's Chapter 249, Section 4. And what that does, it provides an appellate route for local decisions that don't have any other specific route of appeal. So sometimes towns have a site plan approval process in which they don't set forth any means for appealing a decision. So in that instance, you know, it would be a sursurari appeal. Local wetlands bylaws very rarely set forth a route of appeal. So those are all done pursuant to a sursurari appeal. I don't know for sure whether or not an applicant would be allowed to use that process as part of this, but if it did, it's an on-the-record process, which means that there's no actual testimony that will be done as part of the process. You simply, the town has to prepare the administrative record, submit it to the court, and then the court will look on the record and make a determination as to whether or not the board's decision was appropriate or whether it was arbitrary and capricious. And because all that you will have in front of you is preliminary plans at that stage, I do have concerns that any decision that you make saying that someone doesn't comply, you know, because you're concerned about infrastructure or impacts on the surrounding area or things of that nature, would be subject to challenge.
All right. One other thing, which, of course, I was the chair at the time. The walkway that we said, eh, we didn't think it really qualified as a walkway that to cover. What, where is that threshold? You know, you have tiny, tiny, tiny ballpark.
One of the reasons in which we wanted to have this discussion, that's a special permit criteria. Right? So once you make your threshold determination of applicability, that in fact, yes, you can come and file your application for a special permit, that doesn't mean you're agreeing that their proposal is acceptable to you. That doesn't mean you have to give them a special permit. And that's another one of the reasons that I have concerns with regards to trying to stop a project at the determination status. A special permit is a discretionary permit, all right? Just because an application is filed for a special permit doesn't mean that the board has to grant it. In fact, you could, you could meet all of the technical requirements for a special permit and still have a denial of that permit upheld in certain circumstances. You still can't act in a manner that's arbitrary and capricious. You still have to be consistent with the law and things of that nature. But there's a lot more support. It's not often that a special permit decision by a board gets overturned by a court.
So if we would have approved that, their project the other night, we could have still denied it?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're not saying, definitely, yes.
What you would be saying, and I think that's sort of the mindset that you need to recognize, the purpose of this threshold determination process is basically for you to be able to tell the applicant, either A, you can't meet these requirements, don't waste your money, or B, yes, it looks like you might technically meet the requirements, feel free to spend the money, but we're gonna have a full special permit site plan review process, and there's no guarantees as to what that outcome will be. You're not obligated to approve a project simply because you decided it met the threshold for submitting an application.
That wasn't clear.
These meetings aren't binding, right? I mean, we're giving them suggestions. Until they give us a plan in place, nothing's binding. So they're filling us out.
The only thing that will be binding as part of this process is your determination as to whether or not they meet that threshold to allow them to file an application. That's all that's being done as part of this process.
So it's not even can they file an application, but it's can they file an application using the overlay? Because they can obviously file an application.
Right. Can they file an application under this?
Under this particular overlay rules. Because the overlays, I mean, no matter what, what plan they come in with, they can file it without the use of the overlay.
Correct.
Whether it meets the requirements or not, I mean, we can reject it at that point, but they can file an application with full, full design drawings under the underlying zoning. The question we have, that we're being, that's being placed on us is, will we allow this proposal, this fuzzy proposal they're coming in with, to go forward using the overlay rules? And it certainly, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is that we basically should allow anything to come in under the overlay, but tell them that we're not gonna approve this if you bring it, if you develop it this way.
I don't, I don't think you should say, we're not going to approve it.
But we wouldn't approve what this, what you're showing us today.
I certainly think you can send the message that this is not our preferred development here, that we don't necessarily think this is something that we are going to be in support of.
But the thing under the overlay is that there's a lot of the criteria that are evaluated within the context of the use. There's a lot of the limits that are evaluated by this board within the context of the neighborhood, the, the, the character of the neighborhood, the traffic patterns, the this, the that, the whatever, in terms of is it appropriate for that site? So...
But a lot of that goes to the issuance of a special permit to allow that sort of density on that particular property, all of which is part of your special permit process for which you have discretion.
Yeah. I have a thought here. I'm gonna try to push a couple of buttons, see if I can... It would seem to me that the whole point of having this, this process of looking at the proposal and seeing if it's applicable kinda requires that we be poking into a bunch of details that ultimately will be discretionary with us on the, you know, in the context of special permits. If not...
Why have it?
Why have it? Why not just say, what you have proposed falls within the letter of the, the boundaries placed by the overlay? And just, you know, get rid of the hearing entirely? And I think there's a broader purpose for the hearing, and that is, as we point out, to give people an idea whether they're likely to succeed if they bring it. Now, you don't wanna talk that way, but if, if, if that's not it, then let's just not do it.
I think that you can give that kind of feedback.
Yeah, we have to.
It's certainly not inappropriate for the board to say, we think that this may meet the technical threshold requirements, but we're not enthusiastic about the design.
Well, I think that's a lot of what we heard in recent...
Right.
And it wasn't necessarily...
I think that's helpful feedback for an applicant to receive so they sort of know, you know, where things are going to go once they file their application. What I do think is the board really needs to look at the threshold determination process as a process that's designed for the benefit of the applicant.
Right.
And when I say that, what I mean is, so that the applicant gets the feedback as to whether or not there actually is, there's any chance of success. Because going forward and actually doing the full engineering that comes along with the special permit filing is very expensive. So this allows them to do less than that so that they can get their sense as to whether or not there's any reasonable basis. I think the questions that were asked last time with regards to the density were good questions and important questions, and I think you do wanna see the evidence as to whether or not they can meet the technical, you know, requirements of the bylaw. So if they, if, if they're unable to show the, and I don't mean just any particular project, I mean, anybody that comes in. If they show a design and you look at it and say, you know, this doesn't meet this aspect of the bylaws, we want a proof plan that shows you can get the number of structures on the site and comply with all of the applicable setback requirements, state building code requirements, things of that nature, that you need to see that. If they're, if they're showing a density that's double what they could actually reasonably get on the site and meet all other requirements, that's a reason to say you can't do this.
The problem is, like, the other night specifically, I don't think anybody here, and I don't have much experience, but there are people here with experience. Even also, nobody could really say how many units they could put on that. Nobody would come up with an answer.
So the way that the bylaw exists currently, there isn't necessarily a quick and easy answer. It really does get down to a question of showing the buildings on a plan and determining whether they meet the setback requirements, whether they stay out of that exclusion zone, you know, whether they meet building code requirements for separation between buildings.
Proof plan. We can ask them for that.
Correct. And that should be part of your threshold determination.
They were already telling us with the exemptions they had, they had enough for 62 units.
Yeah.
Now, the other problem...
But they didn't prove it to you. They didn't show the, they didn't show the buildings that would allow them to do it.
Now, the other thing that we've run into in the past is, it's right down here in Turnpike, is the developer came in with one solid building and said, we can get so many units. And then they ended up putting that small road in with the six small units in there, which planning board members have taken a considerable amount of heat over. I really don't think it came out that bad, and nobody ever mentions that we tried putting in over 55 on it. Nobody mentions it. But that being said, we get people coming in here, we've got six units, we had this approved for 21, we're doing you a favor. But we really didn't have it approved for 21. We had given them, yes, you could possibly...
That is absolutely the correct point.
Right.
The fact that, the fact that there's a determination that 21 units is possible doesn't mean that you would allow it ultimately. It's a discretionary permit. It doesn't mean that you have to allow 21. What it means is, if you want to apply for 21, we'll go through our special permit site plan approval process. We'll make the determination as to whether or not it's feasible to do this many or whether, you know, it needs to be reduced.
I thought they came back and said they could do, they could do 10 without, you know, they could do 10 townhouses there, and then we worked with them to make it better fit the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, you went around for the first go-around on that. There was several different go-arounds on that same piece of property.
Several approvals.
There were several approvals.
So Tim, one of the things that we've, we've done here in the past, I don't think you were here at the time, we've done some cluster developments. And in that case, we always have them do a layout that shows how many units can they put on it without using the cluster setbacks and sizes? Yeah, we did it on Misty Meadows, is they had to do a layout to show, this is what by right, using standard setbacks and standard lot sizes, will fit here. And then that was the number we worked with in terms of doing reduced lot sizes, reduced setbacks, reduced frontages, whatever, as a cluster. But doing this is no different in terms of showing a standard layout without any exemptions, without any special permits, what's the baseline?
So by right would be a proof plan almost, right?
A by right is a proof plan.
So it's a little different in this sense. This isn't a cluster. What they need to do is show you a proof plan of what they could do under this bylaw.
That's right.
Which allows a greater density, you know, in and of itself, but imposes specific requirements. But then they may come and say, well, we're gonna look for the board to grant waivers of certain provisions. One of those waivers might be, you know, that you can only have so many units in a structure, and they'll ask for you to grant a waiver to allow a single structure with X number of units. But when you're setting your density, you need to look at whether or not they comply with all of them before you grant, you can't presume that you're gonna grant a waiver before you hold a hearing because that in itself would be arbitrary and capricious.
So what we probably should have done when they came in, or we probably still could do is ask them for a proof plan.
Can we send an email load on that?
That was requested.
For the next, for the next meeting.
They were gonna do separate buildings, right? They were gonna bring that?
Yeah.
They're gonna show, you know, what they could do.
How many quads?
And what I'm suggesting is that's really something, you know, that you should be asking of every applicant moving forward.
Because, yeah, we get them coming in shooting all sorts of numbers at us.
Right.
And that was the thing with me. They went, what, five stories? They had 68 units.
Yeah.
I mean, they, there were so many waivers to apply to this project with their first, and then they kept failing us out.
Well, that's...
As, as it should be to some degree.
This has been by far probably the hottest one that I can remember. But it's, so many numbers are different, and you can't, you look through the book and you try to figure out what's what and...
It's difficult, which is why having a proof plan to review ahead of time is helpful.
I'm really not liking the way that overlay is written. It is confusing.
Go by this.
It really is confusing.
So that's a separate question. I mean, that would require a revision of the bylaw. So that's, you know, something for you guys to have a discussion about, you know, at a later date.
So we really don't, it always comes down to the same thing. If you limit the amount of units, all right, let's say, you can put 50 units on that. Do you put 51, one bedroom, or do you put 53 bedrooms? It's, it's always been that issue. You know, you can, you can try to take and downsize it by saying all one-unit bedrooms, but the, the impact is two different things. If you have one bedrooms, they're assuming no kids, but we can't not zone for no kids either.
And that's a fair housing issue.
That's a fair housing issue. But there's a big difference in a building that has 51-bedroom units and 53-bedroom units, size-wise. So when you use that unit measurement, you're always opening yourself up to that, that standard of, you know, how, you've been around a long time. How big is a three, three-bedroom unit apartment?
Yeah, it's pretty good. It's 1,600 square feet.
What's a, what's a one-bedroom? Eight, you know?
Eight, seven. You can go down to six, probably.
You know, it's a huge, if you, if you stick that unit number onto it, careful what you get.
That's up to them to give us the units and to calculate the square footage of the total building with the, with the minimum lot requirements. It'd be a pain in the neck to calculate it all. We'd be doing their job.
No, but what, you know, that's what I'm saying. There's always that devil's advocate when you say amount of units. You can get hung up on it.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't matter to us, really, would it?
If you don't wanna see a ginormous building.
Well, and that's why the last meeting, I said, my end game is three stories, and you probably get 32 units in it, but if we did the height without the peak roof...
Let's not...
I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, but you know, that, that, what I'm just trying to say is, you're dealing with the box. It depends on how big the box is, and that's something that I'm always thinking about when I'm doing these things, is...
How big's the?
How big is the box?
How big is the overall?
Now, George on Turnpike did a really good thing. I thought he put, he, George came up with a suggestion, let's put two stories in the front of the development and put the big ones in the back.
Looks good.
It does. You know? But you don't have to, I'm, I'm not in charge. He is.
Who's got the floor? Okay.
You got it. Go for it.
Okay. So all I was gonna say is, you know, we've been, we've been evaluating some, some fairly large multifamilies over the course of the last couple of years, and, under the overlays. And the overlays do give us the ability to not have a fixed density, unit density, and use, use our judgment in terms of what's an appropriate density. But as we've evaluated those, one of the things that we evaluate is what's good for the town in terms of the need for housing. And in the case of some of these developments, what's an appropriate, what's appropriate to, to support under an overlay as opposed to the very real potential of them coming back with the same or similar site plan under 40B? Because they could.
Yeah, they can't now.
And they can't now. That's exactly right. So what we may have considered as an acceptable density as an alternative to them using 40B is not necessarily the right answer when they can't use it.
Right. To clarify, they still can use it. Even a town that's over 10% may approve comprehensive permit applications. What it would be is if, in this instance, the Board of Appeals got such of an application, it could simply deny it out of hand, and that would automatically be upheld as consistent with local needs.
Understood.
Even though my uncle Charlie had a early case, and that's how we ended up with the rig of development, the town not having basically what we're talking about here. Not having the correct criteria in their bylaw, you know, like the Palmont, there's 250 units there. They, at that time, they did not have a proper determination on how to size restrict. And that's back in the early days. I'm sure they're going to do that again now. That was, yeah, Charlie won that, and that was how they got the 250. That was, yeah, Charlie won that, and that was how they got the two-hundred-and-fifty units in there.
So, with that being said, do we have any more questions that anybody wants pertaining to this, or do we all pretty much kind of got what Paul is...
No, I think he's cleared up a few things by letting us know that we can approve it, because I almost feel like we're, not that we're, you know, it's going to definitely pass everything they say, but you almost feel like you're letting the project go, or you're telling them it's going to go.
I think it's a great idea to let an applicant know, when you're making the determination, that this does not mean we agree with your project, or that we will ultimately approve it. It only means that you are now clear to file an application.
Right. And we've said to some of them before, "Yeah, a residential project on this property would work." However, you know, you know, when you come back...
I would be very careful about prejudging an application before it's filed. So, which is to say, you can certainly say, "You've shown us some designs, we think you should give them greater consideration."
Yeah.
Because we're not super enthusiastic about what you've shown us, but what I wouldn't say is, "Boy, you know, I really think that, you know, twenty-eight units is the right number here, or fifty-six units is the right number on this project." Until you've actually received a full site plan that has all the information that goes along with it, you really don't have enough to make that determination.
You don't even know, at that point, if they can actually do all of a, they might get into unsuitable soils, or...
Correct.
That's right.
But there also may be a circumstance where you have a specific concern that they have an engineering solution to.
Right.
So, you really should stay away from anything with any sort of definitiveness until you get your application, and then you can tell them, "Listen, don't like this many units, this is why, if you can't fix it, we're not going to give you a special permit." That's fine, when you get to that stage.
Yep.
But I wouldn't do it before.
Well, I don't know, I have a little trouble with that.
Okay.
And the trouble I have is that it strikes me that one of the more important reasons for having this initial approval step is, as was mentioned a little earlier, to save proponents from spending an awful lot of money. This is expensive stuff to do. And I really, really hate to see something come through where we don't let them know that you're going to have some real problems here.
I think you can do that...
And I think that's what a lot of this process is really about. If it isn't...
We have done that.
Then let's get rid of the approval, and just bring him in.
You've done that in previous applicability.
Yeah, we have, we have.
For example, one-fifty-two, one of the iterations, you granted basically a conditional, a positive applicability, where you said, "The board is not inclined or is concerned about overall height..."
Right, I remember that well, I was there.
"...or proximity to the street." So, you're, I think what you did there was you embraced the spirit and intent of applicability.
Yes.
You focused on, we're okay with fifteen units, but not necessarily the box that you're showing us. But that's fine. So, you could certainly say, "You're showing us a building that we think is too high." There's really nothing they can do to change the height.
You put them on notice.
Well, I think that's important, that we do that.
But if you look at it and you say, "We really don't want forty-five units," you have to chop off a story, right, to get to whatever number of units, and they figure out a way to redesign the building to get it down a story, but keep the same number of units...
But if they're asking us, we've had a gentleman that said, "If he can't get sixty units, then he's not going to bother doing the project."
Yep.
It's his decision.
Right, and we did tell him that, too, but then we've kept going back and forth and back and forth.
Trying to, you know, find some space.
I think you can express specific concerns. Height's too much, too much pavement, you're not going to be able to handle stormwater on the site, things of that nature, with the allowance that they can be addressed as part of the special permit process. What I don't think you should do is say, "This is the number of units we're comfortable on this site, and that's the end of the story."
Well, in the recent case that we had before us, we were talking about issues like usage of the park, number of dogs, a whole lot of things that are very, very tightly coupled to the number of units. And they were. Now, how do you discuss those things without using the word "unit"?
That's all determined under special permit, right?
Yeah, that's ultimately going to be determined later, right.
We can determine a baseline, though, right?
What to avoid is a subsequent claim that the board acted in a manner that was arbitrary and capricious.
Very precious.
Because they made a determination as to the appropriate density for a site before they even received all the information.
Right. My understanding from what I'm hearing and reading and interpreting this is, if they come back with a proof plan...
Yeah, then we judge the proof.
And they prove that they can accommodate thirty-two units, applicability gets granted saying threshold, the baseline threshold number of units is thirty-two. However, we may have disclaimers, not inclined to grant a waiver for height, not inclined to grant a waiver for setbacks, or for buffering.
Or for that number. And there are some situations where the statute actually talks about units. We would have to, you know, we could, yeah.
Again, I just want you to be wary of predetermining certain questions.
Right.
What I would say is, when you're making your threshold determination, you are not making a determination as to the maximum number of units that can be placed on a site.
Which they only can get to via the density bonuses.
But you're not making that determination. You're making the determination as to whether the number of units that they are requesting is consistent with the requirements of the bylaw.
Are we also making a determination that the number of units they're requesting is achievable within the sum total of all applicable waivers that we might grant?
No.
We're not making that.
I don't think that you should be taking potential waivers of the specific requirements into account.
With a special permit.
Okay. So, I mean, somebody could come in and say, "Oh, well, just offhand, say, 'Well, we'll put two-hundred units there.'" And we know that that just can't be done.
And that's what I'm trying to say, is, what you are not doing as part of this process is determining the maximum number of units that can be placed on a particular property. What you are doing is make a determination as to whether the number of units that they are proposing fits within the requirements of the bylaw. It may be that if you really took it down to the last detail, that they could get twice as many units under the bylaw.
They might, they might.
But you don't need to make that determination, because that's not what they requested. You're only determining whether the number of units that they requested complies with the bylaw without waivers of substantive provisions.
And/or special permits.
And/or special permits.
The density bonuses are special permits.
Right.
So, if applicability approves a baseline of thirty-two...
Yeah.
And they say, "Well, we're really targeting a project of forty-eight to fifty-four," in order to get from thirty-two to a higher number, it requires density bonuses via special permits.
Right.
You're not approving them, what they're saying is, you're proceeding at your own risk, you're going to, your burden of proof is, it's your burden of proof...
Well, they're all told that at the beginning anyway. Anybody coming in for, on an application like that, is told.
You need to be able to take that into account.
They're proceeding at their own risk.
You need to be able to take that into account in determining the number of units that could potentially be put on it.
Which is their proposal. They're telling you that they're aiming for a max of forty-eight to fifty-two.
And they're implicitly saying...
But we need to figure, what's the starting point in order to base density bonuses on?
Yeah, we need, exactly, we need, well, we need two points. We need the starting point.
That's where we're starting off, that's what we need to start with.
Exactly, I totally agree with that.
You think they have enough time to put together a proof plan for the next meeting?
If they don't, they'll continue. I'll circle back with them tomorrow.
Yeah, and see if we can get that done.
Everything else, even that baseline thirty-two, during the special permit process, as Paul is saying, can be reduced based upon data, peer review, technical deficiencies.
Of course, of course.
They don't necessarily have to give you a plan that shows X number of units plus density bonus units. I mean, if they can show you a plan that allows the number of units they're proposing, they don't have to take density bonus units into account.
Right, okay.
Which is what Chris Mill did. They didn't play the density bonus game. They simply said, "This is how many units we want, we're asking for whatever waivers are necessary."
Yeah, and they were asking for some stuff, but they weren't asking for the bonuses. Well, that's, yeah, there are really two numbers here. We've talked about the, "This is what you could do by right" number, and it's a very important number to have. There's another number that's worth having, which is the, there is no way that you could meet the bylaw with all of the possible flexibility thrown in. You know, what's the high end? There's a range at which, in theory...
Or even mathematically.
Yeah, mathematically, that's really mathematically. There's a range in which this board can work, and there's a high point above which we simply can't do it without totally violating the bylaws, and there's a low point below which this is a matter of right, and there's very little we can do to touch it. We need both of those points, not just one. We need to get both of them.
I think the high point is, prove it during special permit, unless it's an exceedingly high number that...
Okay, well, I would think that because that's mathem, really a mathematical animal, maybe they shouldn't even get out of the Development Department with a plan that exceeds it.
Well, they still got to take up parking and other issues that they got to...
Oh, yeah, there are a whole bunch of other things, too.
Yeah, they've got a driveway issue.
Now, and it depends on the nature of the proposal as well.
Yes.
On the type of units that they're proposing. If it's an apartment building, you're not looking at showing X number of structures on a site, but when you're doing the condos, they have to.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's going to limit the number of units that they can put on a site.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I almost get the feeling it's less a matter of what we're asking for, more a matter of how we ask for it.
Yeah.
Correct.
You know, and that, that is always something that breaks down in the, if you will, in the heat of combat, or in the heat of board meeting.
Right. Okay. So, I just wanted to add a couple of comments.
I just want to say, that is also something that can be cleaned up...
Right.
...in any formal, written determination of a...
Exactly, and that's, fortunately, we're pretty good at writing those. Thank you, Evan.
So, I understand the notion that things have changed over the last five, ten years.
Yeah.
And I understand that the board would view the regulatory discretion differently based upon things that have changed. As Council said, the bylaw's still on the books, but it still provides the board discretionary authority within the context of the bylaw. However, I think it's important to just refresh, you know, the premise of the overlay is presumably to strategically treat different areas of town by providing different regulations and different incentives to encourage somebody to do something that you want them to do.
Right.
So, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, is, the board is viewing the number of units per acre differently, assuming you tie a project directly to inclusionary. We all agree, if you require affordable units, then the units per acre goes up per the inclusionary housing bylaw. However, the board doesn't have any obligation to require affordable units, and then you're not increasing the density in order to accommodate those density bonuses. So, the board, I think, still has the ability to treat the bylaw differently or accordingly based upon times changing. I think the other piece that I'm picking up on this evening is, if the sentiment of the community and the board is no more multifamily, or less multifamily, you've got to change, you're going to have to go in and change the bylaw. So, right now, under, in Center Village, with the particular property you're looking at, may be programmed for thirty-two units on one-point-three acres. If the board feels that that's fundamentally too high...
Oh, then we have to change the bylaw, of course.
Then you go into the bylaw. However, if the board feels as though multifamily as a concept is no longer the right path, it still requires going into the, going back to town meeting and changing that.
I wouldn't suggest that at all. I would say, you know, we do have multifamily, but I think our scale might have changed a little bit now that we're not having that forty-B glaring at us quite as bright as it was before.
Agreed, agreed. And so, my only, I guess, suggestion to the board is, and I think we're learning this as we go, not all sites are equal when it comes to the cost of development, acquisition costs, demolition costs. So, I don't know the number, but there has to be a minimum units per acre financial feasibility pro forma calculation that works in Chelmsford.
I don't think we should be tying what we're allowing because they paid too much for the property.
Totally agree with that, totally agree with that. But what I'm saying is, if you had a vacant piece of land, right, what's the minimum units per acre that makes a project economically viable, a project that the board and the town wants, and where you want it located? That was the strategy, the original strategy of Seoid and the Village Center overlay. Presumably, the town wanted multifamily...
In those places.
In those places, at certain densities to get boots on the ground, that the overlays had flexibility to provide both sides of the table an opportunity to get projects done that were mutually beneficial to all involved.
But Evan...
That's the premise.
In the past, when we've looked at multifamily density and what kinds of densities were realistic to make for a viable, an economically viable project, we were evaluating that based on fair market value of the properties.
No, I don't disagree with that. That point's been making, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So...
I'm not, I never, I don't, I never take that into consideration. I agree with what the board's perspective is on that. I think what the board has done with Seoid, Littleton Road, Turnpike, is you've used the bylaw as well as the methodologies that the applicants are proposing, and it comes in around a high of twenty units per...
Yeah, that's about right.
Yeah, exactly.
And maybe, maybe or maybe not, the board has seen these projects built, and maybe you're still comfortable with that number. But under Center Village, the concept was always that the units per acre in Center Village would be higher than anywhere else in town. That was a strategic intent knowingly and willingly doing that. That's why you're seeing one-point-three acres come in at, I think, thirty-two units. There's planning theory behind that.
The size of that building on the lot, the neighbor...
Totally...
I think that was the thing for me.
Oh, absolutely, and like I said...
I mean, and it was just grossly huge.
Like I said, by right, they can do a three-story building.
His first words to us, his first night, was sixty units, or, "I'm not going to do it."
I think we should avoid...
You were talking about the case.
Right. So, we're not talking about any specific, but I think it would have to fit, if you took a building like that, put it somewhere else...
No, no, no.
Wouldn't it been...
I agree, I agree.
So, Evan, I have a question for you, like, why can't this come out of your office? It doesn't come past your office if it doesn't meet the baseline.
So...
So, and then when it comes, when they came at sixty-two that day, or sixty-eight, I forget, you should sit here and say, "It meets the criteria of thirty-two for baseline by right," and then everything else, and explain that to all of us right up front. And if they're in your office for one year or two months trying to bring it up, you're trying to get these projects here earlier, and I understand that you mentioned that before, but it should not come past you. If it doesn't meet the baseline, and if he's not allowed thirty-two, or anybody at a certain rate, they should not come in front of us.
Well, that's, I think, instead of baseline, what you mean is the maximum.
Actually, I think what they've got to do is come up with a performer.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the performer, but you could say right up front, this does not meet. But the performer will take and give them a real idea of where the number is, too.
Yeah.
Or someone knowing the baseline would just be great.
Yeah.
Correct, because I still don't think on any, that particular one, we all don't agree on what the baseline is. So, you're suggesting if a developer comes to Evan and proposes a project that might exceed what we would consider baseline, that applicant should not become before the Planning Board and go by, and let Evan do our job? No, no, I'm just saying, by right, the location, if it's, if a particular unit wanted to put two-hundred units on a lot that was only allowed fifty, you could say, "You're going to be D O A on the..."
I, no, I think...
But you have the right to come before the Planning Board.
You have the right to come before the Planning Board.
Evan could say, "Yes, you're probably not going to make..." But he could start the meeting, he could start the meeting and say, "I've met with them, they've asked to come in front of you and plead their case, and present the project to you, but this does not meet the by right requirement." to you, but this does not meet the by right requirement.
But let's set up zoning, it says maximum building...
Let's be, let's be careful, I think by rights the wrong word.
Right.
Because they will come through with projects that are bigger than by right. That's okay. We have room to adjust that. It's the other limit that we have to worry about.
In the zoning context, by right means doesn't require a special permit or a...
That's right.
Exactly. I mean, there's, there's, there's the by right limit, and there's the, you simply can't get there mathematically limit. We need both of those limits.
To answer that, the, the bylaw sets a baseline per the proof plan and the other calculation, and then presumably mathematically, it provides a maximum number of units...
Right.
Per the density bonuses. However, that's not how Griss Mill was approved. Under, under one ninety-five thirty-B alternative compliance, as we discussed at the last meeting with council, units per acre is waivable. So if somebody wants to come in and say, I'm not asking for any density bonuses, I'm not building, I'm not doing any of this stuff per your bylaw, I simply want seventy units, they have the legal right to, to have a conversation with you.
Okay.
This particular proponent happened to use this particular methodology that was really in accordance with the bylaw. They could have easily have come in and done what Griss Mill did and said, are my proposals sixty-four units? Right? So, so, so the bylaw, again, as currently drafted, is designed for maximum flexibility to allow the proponent to have a conversation with you guys, the seven elected planning board members. I can tell you that I have adjusted my engagements with prop, with proponents. That, the most recent one, I've said, I told them, your project is ambitious, but I'm never gonna tell somebody no, that's not my job, and you don't want me saying no to people.
Right, that's correct.
Because if I, if I, if I have to start saying no, it could be one of your projects, it could be a friend of your, of someone you know, right? Or a project that you really want. It's not my job to say no. I've never been in the business of saying no.
That's fine.
But I'd like to point out, though, with Chris, with Griss Mill, they had a very large piece of property that they came in with, in terms of the number of units for multiple acres. It, it has been, it has been dwindled down to a large number of units on a very small acreage, only because they donated that excess property to the town. So while it is now a very dense property...
We got something for it.
It didn't start out as a very dense property, and we, as the town, got something for it.
Right. Again, the, the beauty of the bylaw is that, is that every piece of property in town has an ability to have a conversation with the planning board.
Yeah, and they should. Yeah, I think that's as it should be.
Assuming that the strategy is, we want to incentivize people to make development proposals.
Right.
If that's the strategy, then the bylaw is, is meeting its intent, whether, whether the board is still comfortable with twenty units.
We don't have to say yes to everyone, though.
No, absolutely, right. It's a special permit.
I think to his board members, we were looking for someone to, to let us know, now we do know what to do, I mean, ask for a proof plan, but to know what is the real number of units that they can put on there.
You'll find out with the proof plan.
I get that, but also, I think, as being a newer member, was trying to find that out. And we weren't getting, we were getting a lot of different numbers.
So, I, I knew that there was something wrong, okay? However, it was difficult for me to pinpoint, because this was the first time applicability was more challenging and more involved than previous projects. When I say previous projects, I'm only referring to one other in the Center Village. That one, a handful of board members sat on, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall it being as, as, as much, as comprehensive of applicability.
Right.
What, it's, it's water under the bridge. So I knew during this process that something wasn't right, I wasn't able to really pinpoint it. And it wasn't until the last meeting, having, having council here and being able to reflect, to be able to work with council to pinpoint what, what some of the challenges were. So what the boards, the board, you guys showed up at the last meeting talking about the proof plan, proved to us that you can do the, the quads, right? Up until then, that, that wasn't, that's not, my, that wasn't how I was interpreting the bylaw. And so again, this, this bylaw, as we're all learning, it's, it's multi-layered.
Yep.
And we're learning some of the intricacies as we go.
Yep.
So that's why I think bringing council in has been, has been important, I think it's been beneficial. And I encourage the board, as appropriate, to continue to, you know, lean on, lean on council. My other comment is, my style is not, I, I, you know, I, the style for me here at Chelmsford is not to present to the board. The, I, the board is elected, you guys run your public hearing, and the applicant is usually burdened with presenting to you and proving to you. Other towns, someone in my position is doing the presentation prior to the applicant.
Yeah.
I personally don't think that's the right way to go. I like the way we do business here.
I would agree with you.
I like the way it is.
And I usually wait until the board asks me a question. Hindsight being twenty-twenty, I agree, I think some of the newer members weren't brought up to speed appropriately.
Yeah, that's probably quite true.
No, but it would just be, I agree with Tim. I still think right today, I'm not gonna mention the project's name, but I don't think anyone, I don't think we're a hundred percent in agreement what they could do there right now on the site.
And that's appropriate. We don't do that until...
I agree with you.
But shouldn't, but wouldn't, don't you have an opinion, though?
I agree with you. Moving forward, now that we have codified the proof plan concept, I will require that before they get to you.
And I think that'll help us.
I think that helps a lot, Evan.
We're just looking for help.
Why honestly, that wasn't...
I don't think he can have an opinion on that until there is a proof plan.
Yeah, you need a proof plan.
Same as us.
What I, what I did previously was, I did the math per that one column and agreed that, yeah, this is programmed for thirty-two units. It didn't dawn on me to look, you know, that we were gonna do a hybrid approach.
Yeah.
When the board identified that, council agreed, well, now that's, that's where we are.
Right, very good. I think, I think we've actually learned a lot in the last three meetings.
Payment in lieu of, I've heard a couple of people interested in doing different things with the money, I, I don't even know if we've got much in yet.
So the, we're getting, we're getting payments as units close on Griss Mill.
Mm-hmm.
Those funds are in a dedicated account temporarily. At fall town meeting, we will have an article officially asking town meeting to, to deposit money into the housing stabilization fund, which is, which is a term in your inclusionary housing bylaw. As you may recall, funds going in and coming out require a town meeting authorization. And I expect the full payment on two forty-one Littleton Road to be made prior to first occupancy.
Yeah, and I thought the planning board had big, had quite a bit of input to where that money goes, if somebody, if somebody's gotta come in front of us to make a presentation.
Um...
I thought that was it, if I remember correctly.
I would suggest that that's a good, a good approach for an applicant. I'm not sure it's required, and certainly as a, as an elected body, you'll have an opinion at, at, at town meeting. But there's nothing in the, the bylaw or, or statutory requirement that I'm aware of that would require the planning board to, to approve the use of the funds.
I just, I remember, there was something there, I thought, I could be wrong, but I, I know some people are already starting to look at, saying, hey, what can we do with these funds?
Yeah, well...
You know, and I'm, I'm kinda like, eh, you don't even have them yet.
Agreed, agreed. And even if somebody had a, an idea, technically, the funds need to be deposited, and that won't be until fall town meeting.
Yeah. Paul's reading it right now.
Well, how do they, how do they get access to the money? Do they have to apply? Does somebody have to...
So, so that's a good question. So, that process locally has not been defined. So worst-case scenario, it would be, you know, first come, first served, but that first, first proponent would have to make a proposal. They would likely come to the planning board, because they'd want the planning board supported town meeting. Ultimately, if it were a private entity, they'd be making a presentation to town meeting. If it were a, a nonprofit or a town entity, similarly, that proponent...
They would vote at town meeting.
Town meeting would be, right.
And they would disperse it.
Exactly. So it will be, it will likely be project-specific. You know, in, in years past, there's been partnerships with the Chelmsford Housing Authority.
Yeah.
Maybe that's, that's likely, a likely scenario as to how these monies would be spent. But town meeting would be voting, whether it's rehab, new construction, what kind of housing.
Could they use that on like the, the walkways that they're talking about, or is that not something they would...
No, it's, it's, it's specific to the, the maintenance, rehab, or creation of new affordable housing.
Ah.
Yeah, so I mean, no one's gonna be doing brick sidewalks or detention basins with that money.
All right, cool. What do we...
Thank you.
Yep. We get all the information on this, I think, at this point.
Yeah, it's been helpful.
And you wanna do, wanted a little time to...
Yeah, yeah, I would prefer to adjourn, and then...
Can I suggest we approve Monday, Saturday minutes? Yeah, we gotta, I was just gonna say, we gotta do the minutes. Everybody get a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes of October thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
We get a motion on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Who seconded that? I did.
All right, so that, with that, and we wanna, oh, we gotta finalize meeting dates. What's that? Next meeting, January twenty-second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That was easy.
I will not be here.
All right, you got another motion? Uh, yes. I would like to move...
Second.
All right, motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Pretty good.